The oath of the.
No, that's after the oath, Bob.
Oh, well, thank you, Alderman Beavins. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kind of missed that.
Yeah.
Me too. That's why it was important.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item, which is administer the oath of office for five Aldermen and one Mayor, which I believe we'll do separately. And we'll start with the Aldermen. Make sure your mic is on. My mic is on. Are you having trouble hearing me?
Mine was off.
Okay.
I'm on.
Okay, so those of you who need to be sworn in, come up here and stand by the flags or something.
This is kind of official. Can we get a cut of ribbon or something?
Did you bring a shovel?
Yeah, I got the golden shovel. I want to see if we can.
All right, well, I need glasses. Or I can't read.
All right, if you would raise your right hand, I.
I.
Kevin's doing it.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duty.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Of the city of Brainerd, Minnesota.
Of the city of Brainerd, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Here comes the real.
Oh.
Here comes the blooper reel.
All right. I, Dave Badoe.
I, David.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Minnesota. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties. Of the office of Mayor of the city of Brainerd, Minnesota. To the best of my judgment and ability. So help me God. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
It would have been bad if you had messed up Brainerd, wouldn't it?
I got goosebumps on that one.
Okay.
I just wanted to know which one was Badoe. Now, I know. After all these Zoom meetings.
After that, we have now we have a full contingency of council members and Mayor, and we'll do a roll call.
All right, Pritchett.
Here.
Beavins.
Here.
Stingline.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
O'Day.
Here.
Stunek.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
And Badoe.
Here.
Excellent. Everybody is here. That brings us to an item four presentations, Tower Award Presentations to retiring employees. Park Director Tony Saylor and Police Chief Corky McQuiston, take it away, Mayor Badoe.
Badoe is an Italian?
No, we can do that. There's no microphone though.
There will be.
It's mobile.
Corky's not in his fish house.
Yeah. Well, I can't see you guys very well. You're way the heck over there. I'm going to double team this a little bit and put you both together. You both deserve to be separated and receive your own accomplishments. We had this really clever idea because we're on Zoom that we were going to hand you through the screen your award. And then, of course, like everything in 2020, now moving into 2021, that does not work when I'm standing at a podium. So I'm not going to pretend to do anything clever and be cute about it. But we've talked about this a little bit. These awards do mean a lot. And it's a pretty interesting thing that the city of Brainerd wants to thank the people that stand up and work for us and stand up and go the extra mile in our city. We handed these awards out just previously to Jan Lambert and to Wayne Erickson. But it's a little bit different when we're talking about a couple of gentlemen that have been with the city for so long. And Tony, you and I got to work really close together on the park board. And with all the changes that we're going through this last year, I don't blame you for wanting to get into the fish house and out on the lake. It was an interesting last little bit there. And I can't say enough about your ability to go with the flow and to pivot when you needed to and to help us to get headed in a new direction. And although you're going to have big shoes to fill, I think that you put us in a situation where we can move forward very well. And I just want to thank you. And this is me handing you your Tower Award. There you go. Oh, there it is. Score one for 2021. All right. Corky, I'll say the same thing to you. You know, when I was able to give you the award from Community Action and from the Brainerd J.C.'s this year, I spoke a little bit about a few of the things that happened between yourself and I. The very first person that came up to me as an elected official and asked me to sit down with them was yourself. And you invited me over to the police station, gave me a nice tour, and then we sat down and had a really good conversation. And I was really impressed by a lot of the language that you used and a lot of things you talked about. But the thing that I will continue to tell people probably until you're long gone, and hopefully I'm not. Hopefully, I'm still sticking around, is the comment that you made about the training that we were using and how you saw that it had become more militarized, and you decided to pivot. And I've used that word a lot lately, but you looked at that and you said, that's not the direction that we should be taking our officers in our city. And I can't even express to you how much that meant to me to hear our police chief say that. And then, fast forward, those four years later, when in the news we're hearing about all these departments that are having problems, and the training that continually kept coming up was the one that you removed us from. And, you know, I don't want to single that out and say that it's, you know, the worst thing in the world, but I appreciate you seeing that, having the forthright vision to take us in a direction that you felt was right for the city. And I stand behind you 100%. And I hope that when we continue forward, we continue down that same road as well. So here's me handing you your award. That was a long stretch. That was a super long stretch. So I don't know if we want to let them speak just super briefly. Tony, maybe you first.
All right, well, thank you and thank the City Council for this nice award. The Tower Award is something that I think everybody strives for a little bit. It was an honor and a privilege to work for 21 years for the city. And there's just so many good people that the city employs. I could list everybody. And I was glad to be part of the team that strived to make Brainerd a better place. So thank you guys very much. And one thing I've learned about retirement is every day is Saturday. This is great. So thank you.
And Corky, how about you?
Mayor, thank you very much for those words. And I want to express my gratitude and thanks to all the City Council members, past and present, former city administrators. I've worked with a lot of great people. And I really feel blessed at the opportunities and the support that I've gotten in my 24 and a half years with the police department. I would have never dreamed back in 1986, when I started doing ride alongs with a Brainerd police sergeant at that time, that I would find myself in this position. But the opportunities came up and the city put their trust and confidence in me. And I'm very grateful, very thankful, very blessed. And one last thing is I'm really proud of the staff and the work that the Brainerd Police Department does. And without them and the support and the people that are there, I would have never lasted or been this successful. So just a lot of thank yous and just looking forward to the next chapter in my life.
Now, Corky, I will say one thing. This weekend, I shaved my beard off. And in the process, I decided to leave a mustache. And I spent the weekend with my daughter refusing to talk to me. So I just want to say congratulations to you on allowing your family to still have faith in you even with a mustache. Thank you both.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to Tony and Corky for all their years of service for the city. Brings us to item number five, election of President and Vice President of the City Council for 2021, 2022. We will start with the President, and I will open nominations.
I have a nomination.
For the President, Alderman Stunek.
I would make a nomination. We elect Kelly Beavins as the next President of the Brainerd City Council.
Alderman Beavins, you accept that nomination?
I do.
We have a nomination for Alderman Beavins as Council President. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we will close nominations for the City Council President. And we will open nominations for Vice President of the Council for 2021 and 2022. Are there any nominations for Vice President? Any nominations for Vice President? Kelly?
Mr. Chair, I move Gabe Johnson as Vice President.
And I accept that. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations for Vice President? Any other nominations for Vice President? Seeing none, we have one nomination. Did we vote on the Kelly nomination?
We did not.
It's time to vote. And we'll just do a voice vote since there's one candidate for President. All in favor of Kelly Beavins as Council President, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. And then, a vote for Gabe Johnson for Vice President. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. We'll get readjusted here for a minute. Give Kelly the gavel.
Little Chinese air drill.
Any reason why we'd have to move? I don't think so, for this meeting.
No, I can move you the gavel.
Yeah. I actually don't need that either. Okay. I would like to suggest, if somebody would be so kind, is to make the motion when they approve the agenda to include the Council, the two standing committees as item. Where's all the new business?
Nine.
So under new business.
Nine H. I move approval of the agenda, adding nine H to the council committees.
Second.
Okay, here a moment. You have to remember how to do this. Any discussion? Hearing none? We can vote by rook or by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same sign. Motion carries. I've never done a Zoom meeting, so. Okay, we will move on with item number. I got to find out where we are. There's the approval of the agenda as amended. Let's go to item seven, the Consent Calendar Notice to the Public. All matters listed are considered routine by the Council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the Council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. So a motion to adopt the Consent Calendar.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Pritchett, second by Stunek. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Administrator, will you call the roll?
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
And Beavins.
Yes. All right, we are moving down to eight. Unfinished business. Call for applicants. All right, so who's up first? Mayor recommends. You want to take this, Mayor Badoe?
Always. This is a long one, so put your seatbelts on. Here, we're going to be getting a little bit lengthy. You may fall asleep. Mayor recommends, we got terms expiring 12/31 of said year. The Cable TV Advisory Committee, one term expiring 2021, one term expiring 2022. The Charter Commission, two terms expiring 2024. Housing and Redevelopment Authority, the HRA, one term expiring 2025. Park Board, one term expiring 2025. Public Utilities Commission, one term expiring 2025. Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeals, five terms. Five terms expiring 2022.
How many?
Five terms. And Transportation Advisory Committee, three terms expiring 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also am looking for one person to serve on the Police and Civil Fire, Police and Fire Civil Service Commission, that's one term to expire in 2023. And the Ad-Hoc Water Tower Committee has two positions available. Correct, Mayor Badoe?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, we'll be looking for those applications to come in soon so we can start the new year off. Item nine is new business. Item nine A is the ratification of hiring Police Officer Brandon Anderson. We find the paperwork on this. Update on, where is that? Don't see a bookmark.
It's in the packet itself.
I don't believe the document is actually in the packet.
It says documents. That's why I went crazy. So is there a motion to ratify the hiring of Police Officer Brandon Anderson?
No, Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Gabe Johnson, second by Stunek. HR Director Schubert, is there anything else we need to do, just since I don't have the actual motion in front of me?
Mr. Anderson is starting on January 25th at step one of our police officer rate.
Perfect. Is that acceptable with Gabe? Okay, Chief. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same sign. That motion carries. Item nine B is to authorize the promotion of James Kramvik to Assistant Planner. Is there anybody who'd like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion to promote.
James Kramvik.
James Kramvik to Assistant Planner.
Thank you, Chief. And there's a second by Alderman O'Day. HR Director Schubert, is there anything else that needs to be included in this motion since we don't have the?
I do not believe there's anything else to add to the motion.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I have discussion. I'll be voting no because four years ago, when we didn't replace the city planner, I said, well, we're eventually going to. We're just creating a community development, and we will have a city planner. I was told that's not the case. Then we hired a permit tech. And I said, I don't support that because they're going to turn that into a planner. And now it's an assistant city planner, which is just one step closer because what this individual will be doing for the next two years is city planner work. And they will say, well, now they're already doing the work of a city planner, so we need to have a city planner. I've been opposed to this for all five years of the progress, but just wanted to point out that we're almost to the end of the road, but I still do not support it.
Thank you for your foresight, Alderman Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item C is to authorize the promotion of Marvin Bush.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, there is a second motion to be considered for that.
Okay.
We had requested that we backfill Mr. Kramvik's position with an Administrative Specialist II position. He was a zoning specialist, permit technician. This is a little bit of a lower step as far as that classification. I don't know if David Chansky has anything else he'd like to say regarding this or not.
I can, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Chansky.
Yes, so HR Director Schubert is correct. We are asking that the Council authorize staff to fill Mr. Kramvik's position. But as an Administrative Specialist II, this is the position that Lori Johnson served in prior to her retirement. So this position would be focusing primarily on being the permit tech for the building division of the Community Development Department, sort of taking the zoning kind of pieces away from that position, as Mr. Kramvik will be focusing on the zoning. This person takes that step down to focus primarily on permit technician work for the building division.
Thank you, Mr. Chansky. At this point, you're just looking to authorize to hire somebody. You don't have somebody.
Yes, Mr. President, we're asking so we can conduct the hiring process.
Okay. Any discussions on what Mr. Chansky is asking to do? Hearing none, is there a motion to allow staff to seek out, to rebackfill the Administrative Specialist II position?
So moved.
Motion by Tad Erickson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stingline, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is, I don't know what number it is, but it is the recommendation for the promotion of Marvin Bush to Street Maintenance III, effective January 5th, 2021. At step three of the Street Maintenance III wage grid of $27.66 per hour. Did I miss anything? HR Director Schubert. All right.
So moved.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pritchett, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next up. Hang on one second while I go backwards. I want to make this big.
It's page 72 on the packet. 73, actually, would be the next one.
Yeah, well, I'm in the, thank you. I had that. I just didn't bring it. Okay, next up is an update on the police chief hiring. That would be HR Director Schubert?
Actually, we're going to ask Gary Wires from DDA to speak regarding this.
Thank you. Gary, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. You're up.
All right, so on December 21st, 2020, the Council decided to offer the position of Police Chief to George Vincent. One thing I want to point out is that city policy indicates that offering the position to any candidate above step four requires Council approval. So I just point that out because it's pertinent to the later comments that I'm going to make. Negotiations commenced immediately with Mr. Vincent. Salary did emerge as a point of concern from Mr. Vincent that it was not likely that he would be willing to accept a salary within that starting salary range or even slightly beyond that. So there were continuous discussions that I had with city staff as well as the Chair of the Personnel Committee. December 28th, Mr. Vincent withdrew from consideration, I believe, that letter of withdrawal was in your packet for this evening's meeting. After the withdrawal, there was a discussion that I had with city staff about reaching out to the second-ranked or second-highest-rated candidate, Brent Balloon, and just, first of all, see if he had continued interest in the position. Today, at the direction of city staff, I had additional conversations with Mr. Balloon regarding some specifics about the position. First of all, whether or not he was continuing, I mean, he continues to be interested. He is very interested in the position. I was also asked to inquire as to a starting date if he were offered the position and things came together. He would have to give about three weeks' notice. And thirdly, discussion was held regarding salary. Mr. Balloon indicated that he would, the minimum he would be able to consider would be step six on your salary scale. That is $116,910 in the 2021 scale and some change as well. It was a discussion with him. I was not, you know, getting ahead of myself and making any offers or anything like that. He completely understood that. But since the Council was meeting tonight, it seemed prudent, at least on the part of city staff, that I, you know, have some conversations to provide some insight to the Council tonight. So now, where are you at? What's next? I think one of your options is to offer the position to Mr. Balloon. If you did that, my suggestion would be to do that step six of the salary scale, $116,910. Also, I would urge the Council to consider a moving allowance of $2,000. That is something you have done for other department head-level positions in the organization. And then, other benefits that would be available to anyone that's a department head in the city. All of that information has been shared with Mr. Balloon. So that's one option. Second option would be to see if Mr. Vincent would reconsider his withdrawal. Third option would be to ask the Civil Service Commission to certify additional candidates. And subsequent to that, the Council could choose to interview, bring back a subset of candidates that you would have an interest in interviewing further and talking about the position. So those are the options that I see that are before you here this evening.
Thank you, Gary. Any questions?
Yes. Mr. Chair, I have a question. Mr. Chair, we have a council policy that says we hire between steps one and four on our pay administration policy. My question, Mr. Chair, is why do we have a bunch of people expecting significantly more than that? Why are they asking for step six or eight, Mr. Chair, when we only go up to four? We don't go to six or eight.
I certainly can't answer that. Gary, can you?
So I think that I can shed some light on that. When we advertised the position, we did advertise the full salary range to show, I mean, essentially to show candidates what is possible within that range, not suggesting that anyone would start at the top of the range. But candidates like to know what is the salary range for the position, not just what, where could I possibly start. Second comment I would make is that this type of thing happens regularly when salary negotiations commence. A lot of times, candidates are very interested, but they don't think about all of the details until we get to this point in the process where then it becomes much more pertinent. And thirdly, I would say that your policy indicates a salary range, a starting salary range, but it does provide flexibility at the discretion of the Council. So this isn't outside of your policy, per se, but it does, you know, deviate from what the Council prefers for a starting salary range.
Well, Mr. Chair, I would just finish my comment with saying, perhaps when we post positions in the future, we put a salary range, include the expected hiring range, and include that step seven and eight are merit-based, that you can't earn unless you've had six years of employment within the organization. And I think it might save some of this confusion and possibly, right now, a failed search for a police chief because we misled people on what it could possibly start here as. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions of Mr. Wire? Yeah, Mayor Badoe, go ahead.
If I may, I'll echo Gabe's sentiment on that in that as soon as you offer a range that includes higher than what we're looking for, that becomes the range, whether or not it says starting or not. I think this was a misstep in that we can see that our top two candidates were thinking that we were offering more money than we were. And now we have to make a decision, do we want to spend more than we were going to, whereas this should have been right up front in my eyes.
Alderman O'Day.
What exactly is the difference between that step six and step four numbers? What are we talking about giving up? Are you going to give up two top?
So step four is $107,573. Step six is $116,910. In between that is step five. We consider that market for the position. Step five is $112,232. Police Chief McQuiston was at step six.
Alderman Pritchett.
You know, in looking at this with, you know, Mr. Balloon, I feel a little bit more comfortable when you look at the amount of experience that he had, 14 years as a police chief. I believe he's got his master's degree. If you put him on that step, he would fall at about six, as opposed to some of the other candidates who'd never been a police chief before, where to me, that was a bigger jump. So I think it's something worth discussing and worth considering because, you know, in looking at, we had two candidates after that that had votes from the Council. And I think both of them are very qualified. We had other very qualified candidates, too, but I think there was definitely some feeling that those two were our top two candidates.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or questions for Gary?
Mr. Chair, I.
Yeah, Tiffany.
I just have a really hard time with the idea that we would hire somebody new to come in at the same step as Corky when he's retiring. I just think that seems an unreasonable ask of the city of Brainerd.
Certainly. It happened when we hired Corky, ironically, just so you know.
Okay, well, at least there's precedent for it then. I also have a question, whether it is proper for Mr. Vincent to withdraw his withdrawal or if he is out until the end of the process.
That's one for you, Gary. That's one for you, Gary.
Um, I'm not sure I understood the question.
Sure. So he has withdrawn from the process, can he withdraw that withdrawal and enter back in where we are right now in the process? Or is he out until the end of this process, and we would have to restart the whole process if he wanted to get back in?
I see. I, I would think that if, that if the council wished to re-engage a candidate that withdrew, that withdrawal could be, you know, uh, done away with, to, to not use the term withdrawal again. Um, but, but I think that would require action on the part of the council, more than on the part of the candidate. That would be your call, I believe.
Yes, Mayor Bedeau.
Can I just make one more comment? I just want to-
You absolutely can.
I just want to clarify my statement, that I, I completely support, uh, Mr. Balloon, I, I, that was, uh, by far one of my top two candidates, and actually, I, I think I had him slightly above. Um, so my support would be for him, it, it's more of a frustration with the process.
Okay, any other comments?
I'd be prepared for a motion when you're ready.
You bet. Let's, um, well-
It's time.
Yeah, I, I, I think it would, I, I kind of was hoping to say something, but-
Go ahead.
But I don't know, I want to hear the motion, I'll speak to the motion.
Okay, I would make a motion that we do a conditional job offer to Mr., uh, Brent Balloon at the salary range of step six, and to approve the two thousand moving cost for him to get up here.
Second.
We have a motion by, um, Chief Stunek, and a second by Erickson, uh, and now we can discuss that motion, which makes sense. Okay? Any discussions on that motion?
Mr. Chair, I- I have discussion on the motion, I, I could, I could support hiring him at six, because he's, he's a very qualified candidate, and the process was obviously a bit confusing. I don't like the two thousand dollars for moving expenses. We gave two thousand dollars to moving expenses to an employee moving a family up from Texas, the state of Texas, not from Becker, Minnesota, ninety minutes away. So I don't support that, and I know there was precedent that we've done it before, but the problem with that two thousand dollar precedent is going to be the same problem with our step-six precedent. Now we're setting a precedent, bringing people in on step six. Who's going to come in on step four? Because we've set a precedent, Gary has told us, he tells the, the candidates what the precedent is and what they should expect. And if they should expect two thousand dollars, they darn well now better expect step six. And then I will say, I agree with Tiffany, I'm putting him on the same step of, as Corky is just, is confusing, even though we may have done it with Corky, it's, I would expect an employee coming in on the same step as a long-term employee to not make one mistake, to hit the ground running, day one, no learning curve, because you are worth exactly what the outgoing chief is worth. So I could support the motion at six, reluctantly support the motion, but not with the two thousand dollars moving.
Chief Stunek.
Mr. Weers, is he expecting the two thousand dollar moving expense, or is that just a little carrot for him, for a must?
Yeah, I did, I did not, um, make any commitments to him about anything. Um, there is no expectation of the two thousand, I simply stated that as a past practice on the part of the council, so, um, that has not been, made no commitments on your behalf.
Chief?
With that said, I'd be willing to withdraw my motion, included with the step six, without the two thousand moving. We have the discussion with Mr. Balloon, see what he says, if he doesn't, then we've saved ourselves two thousand bucks.
Tad, you okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
All right, so we have a amended, a corrected motion, am I going to vote on the amendment?
Question.
Tad?
Um, just with the packet, do we need to also officially withdraw the conditional offer to Mr. Vincent?
Can that be part of your motion, Chief?
Absolutely.
Tad?
Okay.
So to withdraw and offer that step six to Mr. Balloon with no moving expense. Any further discussion on this motion? Mayor Bedeau.
Last comment, uh, directed to the motion, a, and as a whole, uh, the whole reason why we've created this grid system is to avoid exactly what we're doing right now. And I completely agree with Tiffany and with Gabe, that this is the whole reason why we decided to do a grid system, was that we, we didn't like the notion of bringing people in at the exact same rate that we were having exiting people at, and there should be some kind of buildup within that. And, again, frustration completely on the process, if, if our top two candidates both believed that we were giving higher amounts of money than we were actually doing, so very frustrating.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Gary?
Well, I, you know, I, I understand and hear the frustrations, I do want to clarify that no one was told that a salary was possible for them. Um, I, I want to tell you too, that this happens all the time. When I left employment as a county administrator after eleven years, I said to the county board, "You will pay my replacement more than you're paying me," which is exactly what they did. Incumbents are always undervalued in the pay structure system, it's the nature of how things operate. So, you know, I, I get the frustration, and certainly, you know, future postings can be handled in a different way, but I just want to point out that it, it's, you know, if you want good quality, high-quality candidates, there also needs to be flexibility on the part of the elected body when, when these situations emerge like this. Um, you know, we could have had different candidates if, you know, we had handled it differently, and that may have been okay, you know, for the city, but I, I would say you've got really, really high-quality candidates, and, um, making this modification is, to me, makes sense, but, and, and I would say that this does come up regularly.
Okay, hold on, we seem to be kind of drifting away from the motion of hiring a police chief, and into the philosophy of how this worked or didn't work. I love that discussion for another time, but right now, if you have nothing to say on the motion at hand, I'm going to ask you to hold off and bring it to PNF when they meet in two weeks. Okay? So if you want to talk about the hiring process, and what Mr. Wires just said, and what Gabe has said, and, uh, there's been a lot of great comments, I think that's awesome, but I'd like to either hire this man or not, this is where we get to do this. I have a motion on the floor, and a second. Any burning questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Thank you, Gary, I suspect you're going to get some questions in the future.
Understood.
Okay, appointment of an acting police chief, we don't, we're looking at probably three weeks, I heard, correct?
Approximately, that's what we were believing, um, he does need to make sure he accepts the offer and everything else, but-
Say three to four weeks, do we, do we, do we, Chris, what do we do? Do we put somebody, do we make a, we have a second-in-command, we have a lieutenant, yes?
We have a deputy police chief.
Deputy chief.
Mike Bestel is our deputy police chief, and that is what we are recommending, is that while Cork, when Corky leaves, which is on January sixteenth, that's his official retirement day, that Mike would take over as our acting police chief, and then keep him in that capacity until Mr. Balloon would start. The only thing is, is when we look at our employee policy manual, it states that he should be starting at the step, the lowest step of the police chief grid, when that requires a fifty-six cents per hour wage adjustment for him, he is asked to go to step four, excuse me, step three instead. Um, I believe, believe that Chief McQuiston is available, um, and has, um, for input, if you would like him to discuss this.
Chief McQuiston, do you have any comments on the approximately two weeks that we might need?
Yeah, I do, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about this. You know, two quick things I just wanted to point out, one, when we enacted this policy, when the new city policy manual was worked on by the attorneys, department heads, staff, um, and, and this sounded logical on paper, that somebody should just go to the next step that's higher than their wages, I don't know if anybody really ever looked at that and made the wage comparison of the two, so that we could see that the, the increase is pretty insignificant, um, the fifty-six cents an hour for a position at this level to ask somebody to take it over, for really, I, I don't think you have a, a determined time period right now, I mean, in your best-case scenario, your candidate's able to give a two-week notice and start working, but I think the likelihood of that's probably not possible, so you're going to be asking this person to take on, uh, definite increased workload and duties and responsibilities, and I, I don't think we ever took that into consideration when this policy was made in the manual. And then that just kind of leads me into my second point I want to make, is, is there is a lot more responsibilities and duties, and you're going to be taking that workload that really three people were doing, and again, spreading it over two people, the lieutenant and the deputy chief now, for those two to manage that, and, uh, there's, there's some increased stress and responsibilities and obligations that come with that, so I, I really think it's worth some consideration that you look at that, and then, a, as you just pointed out earlier, this is a conversation probably for another time, is to look at that policy in the manual, and, and maybe give some consideration to the, the reality of the numbers, and if there's some changes that need to be made, thank you.
Thanks, Chief, hang on one second, any questions for Chief McQuiston about what he just said, yeah, Gabe?
Was there a specific recommendation on what step he was thinking?
No, he requested step three, uh, of, I believe, his wage grid, yes?
Of the police chief's wage grid.
Of the police chief's wage grid.
And, and Corky endorsed that.
And Corky just endorsed that.
Okay.
For the, just the two weeks, correct, Chris? The mic's on.
Until the gentleman is on board, so we're assuming it'll be about two weeks, it might be a little bit longer.
Yeah, right. So it's a, it's a short-term, whatever we do, whatever we offer, uh, Deputy Chief Bestel, it's going to be a short term. So any questions for the chief?
I have a question probably for Chris.
Okay.
When we say until the new person is on board, is that the hire date of the new person, or will we allow some transition time in between?
It is the date of hire.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions, the chief? Anybody want to make a recommendation to follow, yep, uh, Gabe?
I'd move to appoint Deputy, Deputy Police Chief Mike Bestel as acting police chief effective January sixteen, twenty-twenty-one, and until a new police chief is on board, further Bestel's rate, show, for this temporary appointment shall be at step three of the twenty-twenty-one police chief wage grid.
Second.
Yeah, we've got a motion by, um, Johnson, a second by Stunek, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Next up is the, uh, item F, which is accepting the resignation of Community Service Officer Mason Barton, and that is looking for a motion to accept the CSO Barton's resignation with regret.
So moved.
Motion by Pritchett, second by Erickson, any further discussion?
I'll just say, I, I had the opportunity to meet, um, meet him and, and know him, and he's a really, really quality young man, and so I'll just echo the with regret part.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Next up, item G is the planning commission terms. Mr. Chansky, this is yours, what is it you want us to consider?
Thank you, Mr. President, the planning commission, uh, during their November eighteen, twenty-twenty meeting, had a discussion regarding terms of service for commissioners. Uh, they serve three-year terms, uh, but was brought up is that currently three members of the commission have their terms expire at the end of twenty-twenty-one, and a further at the end of twenty-twenty-two, and then no one would expire in twenty-twenty-three. So two out of every three years, three of the members, uh, come up for renewal, or for the position to be filled. Uh, the seventh member of the planning commission is the council liaison, which is called, which is appointed by the council president every two years. Uh, the concern that the planning commission has is there should be, should there be turnover as terms expire, um, that, that being, uh, commissioners not seeking reappointment, uh, they believe that, that there could be a, uh, great disruptiveness to the continuity of the planning commission, the issues and projects the planning commission is working on. For example, five out of the six commissioners excluding the council liaison have changed since two thousand eighteen. Uh, the, at this point, as of today, the only planning commission member that was on the planning commission, um, when I came to the city on December thirty-first of two thousand eighteen, is, is the Chair of the planning commission, which is Don Goram. So the commission directed myself to bring this forward to the city council for discussion, um, and as staff, if we were discussing, we believe that this meeting is January fourth, because it's the organizational meeting, would be a good time for the city council to discuss this. In your packet, you have a memo from, from me, it lays out how the current terms are, exist, with, uh, Mike Duval, Chris Foley, and Teresa Woodward expiring on December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-one, Matt Cowdell, Stunt Goram, and Kevin Jaeger expiring December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two. I also provide a potential reorganization of it. Um, again, this is just one option that the, the city council could discuss if they so choose, um, that would have spread the commission out over those three years, so in this situation, you could have two commissioners' terms expire every year, um, versus three in one year, and then having one year where no one expires. Um, so at this time, uh, Mr. President, the planning commission is requesting that if, um, the council be willing to consider this and discuss this.
Okay, I certainly understand your point, is there any questions, Gabe Johnson?
Mr. Chair, I have a comment or a question. Is it current policy that three people expire, two out of every three years, and there's one year where there, nobody expires, that's the current city policy, or is something getting, part of what?
Uh, Alderman Johnson, so we looked into this, and it seems that that is the current policy. Um, the planning commission operates, um, in, just like most ever other commission, where if there is a vacancy, someone is appointed to fill out the remainder of that term, so the term wouldn't restart. So at some point, either it was designed this way, or it might have come out of whack. Uh, during our research, we couldn't, I couldn't figure out if or when that happened. Um, the planning commission terms, they are not something that are outlined in the charter. Um, so from everything that I could find, it appears that it's three in one year, three in the next, and the third year, no one.
Thank you, David, so it looks like it just gives the-
Yeah, council president maximum power to fill the entire planning and zoning commission in one term, is really how it was done, but I, I think-
As it should be.
Yeah. I, I, I think we should have staff bring the policy back to us next meeting, and, and, see what the current policy is, and a proposed new policy, and what that would look like, as opposed to willy-nilly making things up here.
I, I agree a hundred percent, is there any, yes, Tiffany?
I have a question, so if it's not in the charter, where is it? That these terms are laid out?
And that is something that will require more research, again, I couldn't find it as I was looking, that was kind of what, um, one of the reasons the planning commission brought it up, because some of our members did their own research as well, and they couldn't find it.
Yeah, that's too complicated a question for a new Alderman, so we're-
I apologize.
We'll work on that, that's exactly what Mr. Johnson is, is, is referring to. Tad?
Well, I agree, let's have it come back, but I like the direction you're going, I think, you know, minimizing the exposure to these vacancies, spreading it out over three, two vacancies for every three years, um, is good, so I like the direction that you're going.
Excellent, Alderman Pritchett?
One other question, I, I totally agree with bringing this back, if it comes back in this form and we endorse this, I just want to know, um, what was the process used to decide whose terms and when, and is, are those committee members on board with that? When their terms are, individual terms are ending?
This was just a recommendation of a potential, um, way it could be filled, um, I wasn't necessarily intending to say it should be filled in this way. Um, so this is just based off of how the names came down, move, moving certain people. Um, again, it didn't mean to say that, uh, Commissioner Duval should be extended one year over Commissioner Foley or Commissioner Woodward.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, you've actually had a chance, I'm going to give Mr. Bedeau.
My only comment is- My only comment is that, uh, the, we had looked at this for the park board, because we believed that they had fallen out of whack as well. The, the park board is in the charter, and it, it seems very clear by that, that the park board is set to have one per year to go five years, so every year, there's one falling off, so I would assume that it, this should have probably been something similar, but we did think that the park board was in a similar situation, we found out that is not the case, but there should be, and is, and is in the charter with language that reads, that one would believe would be one every year for five consecutive years.
Perfect. Okay. Gabe, was yours a motion that this should come?
It was just a recommendation to the Chair to-
Yeah, we can do that, we don't need a motion for this. So Tiffany, you had one more question, can't wait for two weeks, go ahead.
Well, um, what I was suggesting is that rather than extending somebody's term, we stick in a one-year term to bring things back into alignment.
Did you get that, Dave?
I'm sorry, I wasn't close to the mic.
No, I got that.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else that somebody, that anybody needs Mr. Chansky to know before he works on this? Okay. Anything else that somebody, that anybody needs Mr. Tansky to know before he works on this? Okay. We'll see if we can get it back in two weeks if possible. Okay. Next up is item H, which are the council committee reports. I'd like to make a recommendation right now for the two council committees and, uh, see if we can get this voted in. Uh, when, you know, in the past, we haven't always voted on this, but I'd like to do it tonight if we can. So, my, my choices for personal and finance would be, um, would be Gabe Johnson, uh, Chief Stunek and Tiffany Stangline with Gabe as chair. And my safety and public works choice would be Dave Pritchett, Tad Erickson and Mike O'Day with Mike O'Day as chair. Unless you want to beat that up, let's make a motion and move on.
I'd move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. So, now we got our committees for two weeks from now. Uh, can, thank you Chairman Johnson and Chairman O'Day for accepting those positions. Next up, we have the, uh, all of the liaisons. My, my normal recommendation, if you're happy with the liaisons that, where you're at and you're an existing council member in the liaison, you should be, you should stay there. There's no use disrupting the apple cart. If you've got one that you'd like to get off of, please let myself know. Uh, I mean, you could even say, right, I don't know what's open because I don't know whatever, what Wayne and Jan were on and I don't know if we were missing any. Do you, Gabe?
I, I don't know, Mr. Chair, but it'd be nice if you could have staff send that out to all council members. Then we could, we could send back to Jennifer what we're interested in. She could get it to you.
Right on. That's perfect. If you can do that.
Absolutely. Mr. Chair, we will have that done.
So, if you've got, if you're on, if you're a liaison that you would like to decline or to switch up, please let Jennifer or myself know. Okay? So, that can go on the list as currently filled by Tad, but he'd like to get off. So, okay? As a matter of fact, please, when you send that out, uh, Administrator Bergman, include all the liaison positions and who's, who's in them so, so our new people can see who's serving on what. Okay? All right. So, we'll try and get that wrapped up in two weeks. Next up is the public forum. Uh, this is the time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. Time limits may be imposed. Do we have anybody? John?
One caller.
Caller, do you have anything you want us to address the council with? Are they unmuted?
Yes, they're unmuted.
All right. That'll clo, we'll close the public forum and we will go to item 11, staff reports. We'll start with Administrator Bergman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. Um, just a couple of brief things. Just wanted to share with you that I did do performance evaluations for all department heads on the last two weeks of December, um, using our new, uh, performance evaluation form. I think overall it went pretty well and I think the form went pretty well. I think there are some things that we're going to, uh, look at tweaking for our next year's performance evaluation. And then also to share with you that I will have my framework and my performance review on the January 19th city council meeting. So, would ask that you have a closed session then to do my performance evaluation. As of Wednesday or this coming Wednesday will be a year since I started as your city administrator and I've learned a, a whole ton and I have a, a lot more to learn. So, so thank you and, and I've really enjoyed this crazy 2020 year, um, kind of baptism by fire. It's been an interesting ride. So, that's it. Mr. President.
Thank you, Administrator Bergman. HR Director Schubert, anything to add? Connie Hillman, anything to add? Anything from PUC? All right. That ends the staff reports. Mayor's report. Mayor Bedeau?
Oh, taking the time to speak again. Um, not a whole lot. Just want to.
Nothing to say? Okay.
Okay, moving on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, we're done.
Go ahead.
No, just kidding. I just wanted to say that, uh, a fellow individual that I graduated with um, has since moved on to become a teacher and has asked me to speak to his economics class about the city and, and our financial situations and.
Lord have mercy on their soul.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. But I just want, I just wanted to state, state that, um, it's a pleasure kind of looking back on that and seeing the steps that we've made in the last handful of years and how far we've come to set ourselves up. And, uh, I want to thank you for making my talk very easy because I get to say, here's all the things that we've done and here's why we're great. So, I just want to thank all the councilmen for doing so.
I think we'd like to review what you're going to say to make sure.
I'm going to say specifically, Kevin Stunek has been the biggest pain in the rear of all councilmen. However, I just want to.
Kevin, you could just go in on the Zoom meeting, on the Google Classroom meeting and just, you know.
The mayor is speaking. Excuse me.
You know, I, I got a fundraiser for the water tower. We need a bucket to hand around to throw a buck or two into trash on the mayor.
That's right. That's right. Anyways, so I just wanted to say that. And one of the things that, as the mayor, I think that is, one of my goals is to start talking to as many students as humanly possible and, and start talking specifically about what makes this city so great so that as our students who are well-educated in our area uh, decide to move on, they're given the opportunity to see what is fantastic about this place. So, it's just an opportunity to do so and I want to thank you guys for making that talk easy.
Thank you, Mayor Bedeau, and thank you for your good spirits. Alderman Stangline, anything you want to add?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Alderman Bedeau? Chief Stunek?
Mr. Sandy, looks like he needs to speak. I think we forgot to ask.
Got the television staff.
You know, I forgot the television people. All right. Thank you very much. Paul Sandy, you've got some staff reports. And then David, you're next.
I just wanted to thank you all for keeping me on for another two years.
We can change that.
David Tansky?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have two things. First, um, December 31st did mark two years of my employment with the city of Brainerd. It's been wonderful. I just wanted to thank the council again for bringing me on board. I'm looking forward to many years with the city to come. The other thing I just wanted to mention, uh, is the parking commission has officially met. They met in December. Have an organizational meeting and moving forward, they will be meeting on the third Thursday of every month at 4:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. I saw HR, or, uh, HRA Director Sharpentier was on there. Anything you want to add, Eric?
Uh, no, thank you now at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. How about Joe Langle? Anything from the attorney's world?
Nothing from me. Thank you.
You bet. Chief Stunek, back to you. Anything you want to add?
Street department did a great job of plowing there at my house at 9:30 this morning cleaning up the road. I wasn't even ready for them yet. So, they did a great job, Paul.
It must be tough being retired. Dave Pritchett, anything you want to add?
Nothing to report.
Gabe Johnson?
Yeah, I want to say thank you to the council and the mayor and all the staff for serving as the council president for the last two, two years. It's been a great pleasure, albeit rather time-consuming. I spoke to Jennifer hours a week. Kelly, have fun with that. But, uh, good luck to you, Kelly, and good luck to the new committees and everything as we're going in. And thank you for appointing me to Personnel and Finance. That's the committee I actually like.
You have earned it, young man. Thank you. Tad Erickson?
Uh, just thank you as always to staff and welcome our two new members. Other than that, that's it.
The only thing I'm going to add is EDA meets Thursday at 7:30 in here, I believe, and.
In person?
Uh, I don't know if it's in person or not. No. Okay, I'm sorry. We're meeting online, Zooming. And, um, Charter Commission meets Thursday night in this, that's definitely in chambers at 5:00 PM. Yes?
Charter Commission will be meeting on the 13th of January. Yes.
Okay. All right. So, I totally screwed that up. If you know when anything's meeting, let me know. Uh, Mayor Tor, council member reports. And now we're looking for a motion?
Didn't Ms. Wodey get it yet?
Yeah, I asked him.
Called him Alderman Bedeau.
That's what I thought. So, this is a good start.
I am so sorry. Alderman O'Day, I wanted to save.
Name on your mask.
I wanted to save you for last because I knew you would have words of wisdom.
Yeah, what do you guys want to know about it?
Yeah.
Uh, no, I want to say thanks for being welcoming. Um, I've gotten to know a lot of these fine people in the, in the building here today and, and other days. Um, looking forward to getting more and more involved. Um, and thanks for adding another meeting to my agenda as chair. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. We've got, and, and, and that's just the beginning.
I know. We're here to help. I started, but what?
Next up is our motion to move to closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes. 13D point 05 subdivision 3 Baker for attorney-client privilege to discuss Tom's Backhoe Service, Inc. versus the city of Brainerd pending litigation.
So moved, Johnson.
Very good.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll give you, uh, we are moving into closed session. So, if you're not part of the.